Good evening, it's my pleasure to call to order the business meeting of the Dayton Board of Education Tuesday, March the 20th, 2018. May we have the roll call, please?
President Harris.
Present.
Mr. Alhamdani.
Present.
Mr. McManus.
Present.
Ms. Raynor.
Present.
Ms. Taylor.
Present.
Dr. Walker.
Present.
Ms. Wick-Gunny.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you, may we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? We are very excited this evening because we have so many awards to be giving out, given out, and we want to say that we're very proud of our young people, our students, and we look forward to celebrating your achievement this evening. At this time, we're going to have Michelle Ruby to come to present Westwood Pre-K through six Super Math Master.
I'm Michelle Ruby, and I'm from Westwood Pre-K six, and I'm very proud to be there at the school. And I want to thank Dr. Lolly for letting us come and just show what wonderful students we have in the Dayton Public Schools. We hear a lot of things about this and that, but I want to just showcase the 26 Super Math Masters I have at Westwood Pre-K six. Their teachers work with them every morning to work on their intervention in math, and I want to just increase math fluency. I have brought the fastest of all, the quickest of all of the students, but the others are really, they can go very quickly as well. But I've asked these five students here to represent the math fluency that we do at Westwood Pre-K six. Okay, now I am, now I am going to give them a few problems, this is something we can't really practice for, so, and eventually I'm going to turn around and say, "Give me a number." So you just give me a number. But I'm going to start out with, I will give them operations, and they, their brain is like a computer. 12 times 12 minus 44 divided by 10 times 6 plus 4, square root. Eight, excellent. 9 times 9 minus 1 divided by 20 times 4.
16.
Okay. 12 times 12 minus 44 divided by 10 times 6 plus 4 minus 1 divided by 9 times 7, square root of, square root of 49. 7. 7, okay. You ready? Okay, I'll slow down. I'm so proud of them, they're so good. 5 times 5 minus 1 divided by 6 times 4, square root of.
4.
Excellent. 12 times 12 minus 44 divided by 20 times 5, square root of.
5.
5. 5 times 12 plus 4 minus 1 divided by 9 times 7, square root of.
7.
7, excellent. 9 times 9 minus 1 divided by 4 plus 5, square root of, times 3.
15.
15. 15 times 2 plus 6, square root of, times 5 plus 2 divided by 4.
8.
8. 8 times 8 minus 1 divided by 9 times 7. 49 minus 1 divided by 6 times 8 minus 1 divided by 9.
8.
7, excellent. Usually they don't have all these people looking at them. Are you ready? 11 times 12 minus 100 divided by 4 times 8 minus 1 divided by 9. 7, excellent. 7 times 2 times 2 divided by 4 times 7.
49.
49 minus 1 divided by 6 times 8 minus 1 divided by 9 times 7 minus 1 divided by 6. Excellent. 11 times 12 minus 100 divided by 4 times 3 plus 1 times 4 plus 8 divided by 9.
12.
12. 12 times 12 minus 44 divided by 2 plus 4 divided by 6 times 9, square root of.
84. 6. 7.
9.
Wasn't that awesome? Wow. I feel like Steve Harvey. Thank you, young people. At this time, we're going to honor our Science Fair winners, and would you come at this time?
Good evening, I'm Bonnie Porter, to President Harris, board members, and Dr. Lolly. We held our Dayton Public Schools Science Fair opponents in February. I am proud to announce that we had over 300 students to participate this year with 100% of the schools participating. I want to thank the principals, teachers, science fair coordinators, parents, and especially the students for making this year a huge success. I know everybody's not here tonight because there should have been a total of like 65 students here tonight. So some of you might have come in after I took names, so I'm going to start with the ones that I know that are already here. I'm going to start with a class project, and this was Tracy West and Nicole Rogers. Their project was superheroes, superheroes, let me blow in. They earned first place and a superior rating for Division One. Would those teachers please come forward? There you are. Okay, next, we have a set of twins. It's Jamal McShane and Jamil, they are from Dayton Boys Prep Academy. Their project was Shine White. They won second place with a superior rating and they're third grade entries. Our next project is Tamia Ne Jackson. She's from Charity Adams Early Girls Academy. Tamia's project was Music To My Mind. She won first place with a superior rating. She also participated in the West District Science Fair at Central State on Saturday. She's qualified to go to the State Science Fair. She'll be competing in the State Science Fair, May 12th, in Columbus. Our next project is a team project, I know one of the members is here. They're from Harps Mads, it's Madison Prago, Lilian Jones, and Sooty Boggs. Their project was entitled Snail Mystery. They were first place with a superior rating for fourth grade entries. Our next project was also a team project from World of Wonder. It's Kayla Maxwell and Michaela Brown. The title of their project was Propaganda or Truth. They were second place with superior ratings for sixth grade. Okay, our next project was from Rivers Edge Montessori's. It's a team project, Nora Bray, Sakar Hodge, and Zaire Mills. Their project was entitled Pop Pop Popcorn. It was third place with a superior rating for fourth grade. Their next project was also a team project. They were from Stiver Schools for the Art. It was Jay Diaz Nolasco and Morgan Rollins. The title of their project was The Death of an Egg. They won first place rating among the seventh grade, and they also participated in West District on Saturday. Our next project is from Dunbar Early College High School, Nesferetu Espinoza. Josh is what I'm going to call him. Okay, so Josh is from Dunbar. The title of his project was Solid State Rocket Fuel. He won first place and superior rating at the Dayton Science Fair. He also participated Saturday at the West District Science Fair. So here's something special about Josh. He won two special awards on Saturday. The first award was, let's see where. It was the Buckeye Science and Engineering Award. With this award, he's going to be attending that fair in Cozy, in Columbus, April the 7th, 2018. He is competing to go to Pittsburgh. Last year, he went to New York. And at Pittsburgh, if he wins there, it'll give him a chance to go on to the International Fair. There's, there's one other award he won on Saturday. It is the Central State University $3,000 Tuition Award that's renewable for four years. This is the second year in a row that Josh, that he has won that award at Central State, which has given him $24,000 in scholarships to Central State. Our next project is also a team project. Amani Johnson and Ashawn Sanford, they are from Thurgood Marshall STEM High School. The title of their project was Concussion Study. They got third place with a superior rating for 11th grade entries. Next project is a team project from Meadowdale High School, Eric Potter and Anthony Young II. The title of the project is Does Tea Stain, Stain Your Teeth? Superior Ratings for 11th Grade. Our next project is Robert Ingram III from Rivers Edge Montessori's. He won first place with a superior rating for the sixth grade class. He also participated Saturday at the West District Science Fair, and he won a special award. Robert has won an award that's called the 2018 Seed to Bloom Agricultural STEM Residential Summer Camp for two weeks at Central State this summer. I think I see some other Science Fair winners, but I don't have their names up here. Camera. Okay. Let me see if I can. Can you, can you come around and tell me? The names. Andrew Caldwell, what school? Andrew. This is not an easy task. Hold that one for me. I got her. These are not in any particular. Did you have a partner?
No.
All right, we have Andrew Caldwell Jr. from Meadowdale High School. The title of his project was Gauss Rifle? I got that right. Okay, third place, superior rating. Our next winner is Cameron Smetley from Dunbar Early College High School. Her title of her project was Alka-Seltzer and Advil. She earned a superior rating for 11th grade classes. She also participated Saturday at the West District Science Fair, and she will be participating at the State Science Fair in May. Did you have a team project for this year? Who was on your team? There's got to be an either way. Okay, this was a team project. Kalisha Wilcoxen, Alyssa Scott, and LaDamon Andrews from Edison. The title of their project was Detergent Battle. They were third place with superior ratings for the fourth grade entries. This is a team project. Kathryn Keitzber Ray, Emily Esperanza, and Pedro Jesus Cortez. They're from Kaiser. The title of their project is What Melts Ice Faster? They were first place with superior ratings for third grade entries. Our next winner is Abdul Aziz Malik Sin from Valerie. The title of his project was Whose Nose Knows? He was the first place, was a superior rating for third grade entries. And next, we have a team project. Zachariah Haynes, Preston Young. They are from Ruskin. The title of their projects was Rockets Away. They earned a superior rating at our District Science Fair. They participated, went Saturday at the West District Science Fair, and they qualified to move on to state. A good thing about this year, out at the West District Science Fair, they usually start with the seniors with scores 36 through 40. The way we really got a lot of our younger kids to go to state this year is they started with the perfect scores first, and went from senior class down to fifth grade, and then 39s and down. So that gave everybody a chance to go to state this year. Our next student is Zenaya Vargas from Ruskin. The title of her project is Concentration With Gum. First place and superior rating. Next, we have Zenaya Nash from World of Wonder. The title of her project is Elephant Toothpaste. She earned a superior rating for a fourth grade entry. The next project is John Ray Moncrie. He is from Dayton Boys Prep Academy. The title of his project is how, that's not right. It's How The Solar Input Vary With Incident Light Intensity. He won second place with a superior ratings. He also participated Saturday in the West District Science Fair, and he received special award. John Ray received, he also received the 2018 Seed to Bloom Agricultural STEM Residential Summer Camp for two weeks at Central State. So we have two students that will be there this summer. Next, we have Sophia Janesta. She's from Harps Mads. The title of her project is Does AIDS Affect Memory? She won second place with a superior rating for sixth grade. Sophia also participated in the West District Science Fair on Saturday. She's qualified to go on to state. She also received a special award. It was the Ohio Tuition Authority College Advance for $250.
It does, guys.
Next, we have a class project. Kathy Sagers from Harps Mads. The title of their project was Frozen Frenzies. It earned first place with a superior rating for the preschool. Congratulations to all of our winners.
We also have presentations today from opponents at this time. Ms. Joanne Visca is going to come to celebrate our young people at opponents. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm very honored to present these certificates. I want to give you a little background, first of all. This has to do with our work for WDPS FM. WDPS FM is the district's 6,000 watt radio station and Dayton's home for jazz. It's run by staff and students, and a lot of the content is created in my classroom. By the way, I'm the media arts teacher, radio and audio at opponents. Our hosts are students and volunteers, including the legendary Dayton Broadcast Hall of Famer Clay the Cooker Collins, who's on Monday through Friday from 9:15 to 4:30. We also stream the rest of the time we're not on the air live. Well, he's on from 9:15 to noon, and we're on from 9:15 to 4:30. These certificates are recognizing awards that we recently won from the intercollegiate broadcasting system. IBS is an educational resource and an organization of over 1,000 high school and college radio stations from across the country, and they advocate on our behalf and teach us best practices for running successful radio stations. What these awards confirm for me is that the work that we do in our classroom and in the hallways of WDPS FM is among the best in the country. So a couple of students of mine are not here, they're graduates, but their work had played on our airwaves as part of the Dayton Youth Radio Project. Dayton Youth Radio is, is a program that airs on WYSO, which is an NPR affiliate out of Yellow Springs, and we started partnering with them my first year teaching, which was five years ago, and they decided to launch Dayton Youth Radio with our radio class, and we've been continuing that partnership ever since. It's been really fruitful, it's been great for the students to get that real world experience, and their stories live on, they air on WDPS FM as well, they air on WYSO, and then they live on the web. So I hope, even though Kari Alves, who was a finalist in this, in this contest for her story entitled Justice For Kylan, which was a personal tribute to her cousin, Kylan English, which unfortunately, I know we all remember that story, she was not able to make it here tonight, but she is studying psychology at Sinclair, and we're very proud of her efforts. And we hope that you will find her project on wyso.org. Also, another winner actually, for her Dayton Youth Radio Project for Most Innovative Program, was another 2016 graduate, Remy Greathouse, who told her family's story of their search for permanent housing in her, her story entitled A Place Called Home. Now moving on to a finalist for Best Commercial, we, we do run commercials through underwriting on WDPS FM, and Chris Hartley was a finalist for Best Commercial, and I know Chris is here today. He is also a graduate of our Media Arts Program from 2004. He's been our music director at WDPS FM. He's, he works at WHIO, and he goes by many names. On, on The Eagle, you might know him as Michael J. Fox. On K-99, he's Sam Jackson. On WHIO, if you're listening for gas prices, he is indeed Chris Hartley. We like to call him Hippie, but that's another story. That's how he started on our air and WDPS FM years ago. So we're very proud to have him as a member of his, of our staff, and I know that I wouldn't be here without him, so thanks. Thanks Hippie, thanks for that. We won this year for Best Contest and Promotional Event. We had a really fun event this summer called the 89 and a Half Days of Summer, and we gave out some swag bags to our listeners, filled with prizes and tickets and other things to our promotional events. And I want to recognize Patricia Battle, who's been our office manager at WDPS FM for 22 years, and yeah, so she helped us put together the, the prize packages for our listeners, worked with our staff to execute that, and she, we just couldn't run the station without her, so I'm so happy that we are recognizing her for her efforts for this award and everything that she does for us. Next up, I'd like to recognize Devonte Jackson. Hey. Devonte was a finalist for Best News Feature. That was a story he did on the Mobile Health Unit that visited, visits schools around our district. He also won as a finalist for Best PSA for his PSA Be Kind Online. And then he was winner for Best Use of Sound Effects for Back to School Driving. Devonte is a junior. He is top 10 in his class. He is the manager of WDPS FM. He's a member of the National Honor Society. He's my right hand at the radio station, and... And I'm so glad that he's only a junior, so I have him for next year. Devonte aspires to be a meteorologist. He forecasts on his blog called The Greater Dayton Weather Post, which I think he's predicting a 75% chance of no school tomorrow, but that, that's neither here nor there. So Devonte, for all you do for us, and congratulations for all your awards from the intercollegiate broadcasting system. So I'd like to personally thank the board for their recognition of our efforts and for their continued support. Thank you very much.
For all of Ms. Visca's hard work, why don't you, cameras are this way.
Okay.
We'd like to present the certificate of recognition to Joanne Visca, David H. Ponets Career Tech Center. Congratulations on your class participation in the Intercollegiate Broadcasting System 78th Annual Competition in New York City. The hard work your students, staff, and volunteers put into their projects earned eight finalist awards and four first-place trophies. You are all to be commended for your time, dedication, and earnestness. On behalf of the Communications Department of Dayton Public Schools, really appreciate the work that you put into what you do, and as well as Chris Hartley and Ms. Battle. But personally, I just wanted everybody to know what this lady does personally for these students. Yes, she is their instructor, and she goes about her daily task, making sure that they become the best broadcasters possible. But I know for a fact that she puts time and money into these students to help them be the best they can be and to look the best they can be when there is a special presentation. And I wanted everybody to know that. And we are very, very grateful for what you're doing. And it's obvious because of the awards that you're getting. Also, you were, you didn't mention Business Professional Association.
Business Professionals of America.
Yeah, of America, uh-huh, top ten.
Yes, top ten in the state, yeah. One region, top ten in the state, yeah.
We want to make sure everybody knows that one too. So thank you, Joanne Visca. Thank you so much for what you do.
We're going to make a slight adjustment on the agenda this evening because we have a very special resolution that we'd like to, like you to consider this evening. And this is our resolution. Resolution to employ Dr. Elizabeth Lawley as superintendent. Whereas the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District had previously appointed Dr. Elizabeth Lawley as acting superintendent on an interim basis, and whereas the board desires to retain Dr. Lawley as its regular superintendent of schools and wishes to approve employment contracts with Dr. Lawley to accomplish this goal, now therefore be it resolved. Section 1, the board ratifies and approves the bridge term employment contract of Dr. Elizabeth Lawley, attached as Exhibit 8 to this resolution, and authorizes the treasurer and board president to execute this employment contract on behalf of the board. Section 2, the board ratifies and approves a three-year contract to employ Dr. Elizabeth Lawley as superintendent of schools to commence on August 1, 2018, which is attached as Exhibit B to this resolution. The board hereby authorizes the treasurer and the board president to execute this employment contract on behalf of the board. Is there a second? Been properly moved in second? Is there a question? Roll call.
President Harris?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Wiggany?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Motion carries. Would you please welcome our new superintendent, Dr. Elizabeth Lawley? Dr. Lawley? We'd like to present this to you in token of this wonderful responsibility. I move that we go into a brief respite, a recess of 10 to 15 minutes as we celebrate our superintendent. Is there motion? Is there a second? So move? Question? All in favor? Eyes have it. Thank you. We will move into a 10 to 15-minute recess, and we will come back with further agenda items. Thank you. We do have cake and punch in the reception area. I move that we return into session. May we have the vote?
Is there a second?
Second?
Second, the motion.
Been properly moved in second. May I have the vote?
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wiggany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. Motion passes. At this time, we will hear from our bargaining units. You're welcome to share with us at this time. Thank you.
Hello, members of the board. Superintendent Lawley, my name is Steve Keen. I spoke to you last time. I'm from the ASME Union. I represent the operations employees and the school resource officers. What I wanted to talk to you real briefly tonight about was some of the closures on Tite's agenda, the right-sizing plan. Not so much from the, sorry, not so much from the task force or the decision-making side of it, but from the kind of internal messaging side of it. We've been getting some issues conflicting within the school district. For the past few months, we've been trying to prepare our members for the change. We don't think anyone's, at this time, we don't believe that, under the current plan, anybody would lose their job necessarily. But there will be shifting around. People are going to have to adjust their lives and schedules around this. So we've been trying to tell our members that this would be treated like a layoff, as far as purposes of people getting bumping rights and vacancies and such things like that. We were trying to discuss this several times at various levels of management, how this would look if it were to go through. And every time, the answer we got was that nothing's official until it's official, which, to a certain extent, is fair. There was no vote. Until the vote's done, there's not really a plan. So last week, we had a labor management meeting. In that meeting, we tried to get a plan together again for what it would look like. We tried to set up a timetable for what we could get a plan to say, you know, who, how many of the new buildings set up, how many employees will be where? Are there going to be new shifts created somewhere? How is that all going to work? What are the details going to look like? And even for starting the process, you know, the answer we got was the same, that nothing's official until it's voted on, and that we were going to kind of wait and see how it played out. Which, again, if that's the, if that's the organization's plan, that's fair because it hasn't been voted on. But that same day, the principal Valerie sent out a letter to families. It says, it's addressed, the copy I've seen is addressed to Valerie's families. I don't know who all got it. I know that our staff did. It went out to the employees, and it states a few things that struck me. One is that it was a merger, not a closure of the two buildings, and that staff and students would move to Meadowdale. So this creates a few problems from our side that I just wanted the board to be aware of. First of all, it contradicts the wait-and-see ads we were getting from other people in management. So this, to me, creates a sense that there's not really as clear of a focus as I think there should be for such an important issue. Secondly, using the phrase merger versus closure has potential impact for how our employees are moved and who's given priority as far as what vacancies are available, what job openings are available, and who gets to stay where they are and who doesn't. So that wording is important. And the other thing was that the principal who sent this letter out never met with or discussed anything with our union, which is not uncommon. A lot of the principals don't seem to quite understand exactly what role each union plays sometimes. And that happens. It's not the first time that principals have kind of forgotten about us or gone towards board policy more so than what's in our contract. But the letter here was incompatible with our contract language. And it gave, the worst part for me was that it gave some of our employees in that area a bit of a false hope as to whether or not they'd be able to stay where they are and some false information potentially because of the way, the words that matter. And so I was trying to think of how this situation could have happened. And the things that came to my mind were either that, one, different internal staff are getting different messages, which is a problem for the board. Second was that management wasn't telling us everything they knew about the closures, which I don't believe is the case. We have a pretty good relationship with our management department. The third option was that the internal staff believed that the board approval was basically guaranteed, which, this is, this isn't an issue for me as much as it's an issue for you. It could create, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth or try to do the job of anybody in the board's legal or administrative offices. But if this is a feeling coming from the inside of the organization that hasn't been officially voted on yet, we are hearing different things, and we just want to know what the answer is. And if the answer is, there is no answer yet, that's fine. But that's not how it's coming out in practice. And I don't know which of these possibilities, if any of them, are true. Honestly, we don't know how this, how this came about. But some of them say some different things about how the district manages itself and how it manages their own decisions. And with something as important as this that will affect the lives of, the lives and the livelihoods of thousands of families and children with our school district, we just want to make sure that there is a plan, there is one solid message, that we're not hearing different things from different groups of people. So I understand that when this plan, if this plan gets approved, it's just the beginning of the process. There's, from our perspective, we haven't even begun planning details because we've been waiting on the decision. So as these move forward, I just want to stress this to you and hope that we can all start getting on the same page and make sure that the planning process is open, that the goals are clear, and that everyone who's involved understands exactly where they stand. So that's all I wanted to say, was just kind of put that out there, make sure that our message stays the same, and try to get everyone from every level of administration on down, vertical, horizontal, across the organization, on the same page and on message so that we can make this as painless as possible for our members and for the families. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board President Harris, board members. Dr. Lawley, Treasurer Braha, good evening. My name is David Romick, and I'm proud to serve our members as president of the Dayton Education Association. First of all, we would like to congratulate DPS and the finalists and winners, especially DEA member Robin Rollins of the Employee of the Year Awards held last night at the Dayton Art Institute. Once again, it was a great event, held in a great venue. I would be remiss, since Joni Watson is the vice president of DEA, if I didn't also congratulate DPS Employee of the Year, Shawna Welch, as she and I both had the privilege to work under her at the previous Wilbur Wright Middle School. It was good to see her last night, good to see her in good spirits, and a very good and wonderful honor for her as well. With regard to the superintendent's recommendation for right-sizeing the district, both Joni and I are well aware, from our own experiences with being displaced, and this is, I suppose, more a message for our members. We are well aware from our own experiences with being displaced. For me personally, four times with two building closures in my 25-year career here, of the angst and concerns of all employees during this time. I want to assure them, we are here to listen. We are here to support them, and we'll do everything we can for our members during this time. Schools, as a result of the plan as it will be proposed, have been given a chance to reimagine themselves and recruit students back to the district. This is something that has needed to happen for years, and I'm pleased that there is a commitment on the part of our new superintendent and the part of the board to get those students back in the district and begin to reverse the trend of dropping enrollment. The kind of two-way communication that's gone on between the DEA, frankly, and board members and the superintendent during this time is exactly what should happen between Dayton Public Schools and all stakeholders. In fact, the proposed change in the recommendations, which you see on the agenda tonight, came from DEA and is nothing more than effective communication between our two organizations. So thank you. Yesterday, Dr. Lawley, several cabinet members, and I met with the teaching staffs at both Meadowdale and Valerie Elementarys. I want to thank everyone present during those two meetings. There was, again, honest, straightforward exchange in those meetings. Ideas were sought out, creative solutions to all of the issues that kind of go with this kind of movement in the district. And again, on behalf of our members, I want to say thank you and that we look forward to continuing our work together. As I mentioned at the March Business Meeting, the Dayton Education Association has been heavily involved in the national discussion around preventing violence in schools. The U.S. President's remarks regarding potentially arming teachers as a prevention measure set that in motion. I taped a segment of WHIO Reports, the Sunday 11:30 a.m. program, on the morning of March 8, which honestly was a snow day for the district. That episode of WHIO Reports will air on Sunday, March 21. DEA Vice President Joni Watson participated in a Dayton Daily News panel discussion in Kettering on Monday, March 13. And just last week, I participated in a screening of the documentary G is for Gun: The Arming of Teachers in America, and served as one of four panelists in an ensuing discussion on the issue at local PBS 16, Think TV. That documentary and ensuing discussion will air this Thursday on Channel 16 at 9:00 p.m. As usual, Joni and I came together very strongly, and the message from the Dayton Education Association is consistent and clear. Arming teachers and bringing more potential violence to the schoolhouse is not the answer. Instead, arm all educators with counselors, mental health services, and other wraparound services to serve the children and families who need them most. Additionally, on this issue, we want to congratulate the Dayton Board of Education for its amazing work on the resolution on school shootings, which was approved unanimously at the review session last week. Once again, thank you. To everyone here and viewing tonight's meeting, if you haven't read that resolution, please get on Board Docs, pull up the review session, pull up that resolution and read it. It really is a, an impressive piece of work. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Do we have any other bargaining units that'd like to?
Do we have any other bargaining units that'd like to share this evening? Hearing none, we will move toward our public hearing. The public is invited to attend board meetings and individuals are given a designated time to express viewpoints during the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education during the hearing of the public portion of the board meeting will comply with the following rules. Complete a request form prior to the hearing of the public and submit it to the Public Information Officer. When called upon, identify yourself and state your reason for addressing the board. Address the board as a whole through the President and not board members individually. Materials for distribution to the board are handed to the Treasurer. Limit remarks to three minutes. The President has the discretion to extend the time. When your time is up, you are to stop speaking. It is inappropriate to address any matter involving pending disputes, grievances under a labor agreement, disciplinary action involving an employee or student, ongoing labor negotiations, concerns or matters that have already been settled, and/or any matter which because of its nature is deemed appropriate to be discussed in executive session. Thank you so much for complying this evening. Are there those that will come at this time? Treasurer?
Philo Westwood. And next is going to be David Esrati.
I'm Philo Westwood, no one can pronounce it, from, Spanish teacher at Thurgood Marshall High School. Board, Superintendent, and Treasurer, it's a pleasure to be here. I'm excited about many things that are happening at DPS, but I wanted to make you aware of a concern I have for our high schoolers. With RTA changing the way that they are running their buses, it's going to be very hard for kids to get to school. If you have to pay for a day pass at $3 a day, times five days a week, that's $45 a week on transportation. I am wondering if we, among other solutions, and it looks like from your nods that you are aware of this already, but perhaps this is something we can reach out to business partners in Dayton and see if there's some giving that some of these businesses, especially those that have tax abatements and are not directly supporting our schools, want to get on board with supporting our students arriving at school. And I, if there's other things I can get on board with, I will. I've made so many calls on truancy tracker and heard time and time again about transportation concerns. The other concerns I have, and I do feel like we have some momentum, is working on getting our schools as staffed as possible before school starts so that we can have staff initiatives where everyone is working together and we feel comfortable with each other and the students have that security of knowing who their teachers are and the stability of having teachers in the building. It makes such a difference to our students. And then if we can keep this communication between what's going on in school and what's going on with you, that sounds excellent to me. Thank you so very much for your time.
Board, citizens of Dayton, my name is David Esrati. I'd like to start out with quoting the prophet Muhammad. Not that Muhammad, our Muhammad. This is a number you should, you all should remember, 607. We're ranked number 607 out of 608 districts in the state. That isn't going to change unless this board changes. You work for us, not for the superintendent, not the union, not the mayor. And although people in education like to say it's for the kids, I hate to tell you, they don't pay the taxes or vote. The people of Dayton deserve better than 607. To quote Muhammad again, "Parents want to send their children to quality schools." Quality schools don't have 20% annual turnover in staff. Quality schools don't have teachers assaulted. Quality schools don't blow it when they're bench-clearing brawls between their own teams. Quality schools don't violate the sunshine laws. And quality schools don't have a press conference at 5:00 p.m. on a Friday to announce the hiring of a superintendent at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday without time for the public to comment and to review the contract. I asked for the documents that you must have requested to do a proper vetting of Dr. Lally. I didn't get them, which probably means you didn't either. Why did she resign midway through her last two contracts at smaller suburban districts? The last board didn't do its homework when hiring the last superintendent. Sort of missed a DUI, polygamy, fraud, and who knows what else. Ended up costing the district. That same board chose not to hire a local hero with lots of ties to the community who had a proven record of achievement in this district, instead paid him to go away on her recommendation. I find it hard to believe that the last person who gave you an A on value-added and grew Thurgood's test scores 20% in three years wasn't worthy of an interview. I find it interesting that you're rushing to hire someone hired by the last, by someone that the last board fired. Doesn't make much sense to me. But then again, you're 607. The only good news is that violations of the sunshine law by a public body carry a penalty of removal from office. See you in court in July.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals?
Mr. Yu, and next is Sarnie Benzman.
Good evening, school board members. And congratulations, Dr. Lally, for your new contract. Tonight, I want to make a few suggestions on the reorganization. I want to talk about Meadowdale Elementary, and I know that the teachers there are concerned about the situation. And one thing I think they told me was they would like to see somehow, and I heard Dr. Lally say it at the last meeting I was here, that maybe we get Meadowdale somewhere on the school name, maybe Valerie Meadowdale. So that's one thing I know they were concerned about. I've been to Valerie and I love that school because of the fact of the parent involvement. And if you've ever been there, at the end of the school day, you will see many cars come through and pick up their students. They do a lot of neat things there with festivals, and they have movies at night. I want to tell you about Meadowdale Elementary. It's a beautiful building, and they have a lot of good young teachers in the building because when I go in the buildings, I evaluate what's going on there. And I've seen some teachers really working hard. They've got two teachers at Meadowdale right now that have taught there their whole career. And I know they want to stay in the building. So I'm hoping that many of those teachers, if possible, all of them, can be hired back to teach at the school next year. I also have this unique idea that I am going to present tonight, and I know some of the teachers at Meadowdale mentioned it the other day. And that would be, next year, have co-principals. Have two principals making the same salary, and they would be in charge. And I think it would help make things go smoother with the reorganization. Mr. Sampson is a very kind and caring man, and he works hard for his students. And I think it would be nice if he was there and two working together. When they have meetings, when they have meetings downtown, one principal would leave, there'd still be one there. There could be one holding conferences with parents and one going around the building. So I want to make that recommendation tonight. And there was a principal in Dayton schools that thought it was a good idea, so I was pleased with that. My second discussion tonight is on schools, and I'm mentioning magnet schools. We had magnet schools a long time ago, and now we don't have them. One thing I find about schools are that all schools, every school teaches reading, writing, and arithmetic. But somehow, these schools are either doing better or they're attracting more students like the charter schools. And I've been in charter schools, and I don't think they're doing a very good job. So, I wrote down six ideas here. I'm not going to talk about them tonight, it would take me a couple hours, but I'm going to give you the six ideas I put down, and there's a lot of information there. Number one, have a band course and art school on the west side. Every student there who wants band has an instrument. When no students reach high school, then we'll have that music and art school on the west side of Dayton. My second recommendation is a reading excellence school where students who are struggling on reading from grades one through three are put together and have a teacher of 10 students per teacher, 10 students. Number three, academic excellence. We used to have that, where you were recommended to go to a school in Dayton and you had to have a letter of recommendation, and that's sort of like the DECA school. Number four, a math and science center with classrooms dealing with science, and it could be a field trip for students to see things in those classrooms. Number five is a sports academy where the students are taught many different kinds of sports, but they're still having regular education, and the gym teachers would have their lesson plans for the whole year. And finally, and this is the last one, I'd like to have a school, and I'm going to this one, even if I'm too old, a school where they have 14 field trips during the year, and you have to have good behavior. And if your behavior isn't, you get a chance a second time. These would be spread all the way across, including on Saturdays and in the summer. And they would be positive field trips and educational field trips, and I think our students need those. Those are some ideas, and all these schools would be on the west side of Dayton. And thank you, sir. God bless you.
All right.
Hello, Board. My name is Sarnie Benzman. And I just have a few concerns, well, that's actually really one concern, and it's about the contracts that we offer. We need to make sure that when we offer contracts, that we have mechanisms in place that ensure that we are not having to pay out if we have an issue with a contract later on. I've been in the district for three years. This is my third year. And we have paid out nearly a half a million dollars in contract payouts. And if we don't have, it doesn't matter if it's not any slight against Dr. Lally or anybody else, it's any contract that we are offering anybody, we need to have some kind of mechanism in place, legal mechanism that says we don't have to pay you out. If we, if you don't get a good rating, then your last day is whatever we decide, and that's it. There's no extra payout. A half a million, we can't afford that. We, as a district, cannot afford to pay out any more money. A half a million dollars is exorbitant. The amount of money we could have used for other programming is just amazing. So it's just a really big concern of mine as we offer contracts. Like I said, it's not a contract in regards to Dr. Lally's contract or anybody else's. It's her contract, it's anybody's contract that we hire, anybody that we hire and offer contract. I have a year contract. Every teacher in this district has a year contract. If there's an issue or something, then we're done. We don't get paid out. There's no payout. It's, you're done. So we need to have that same kind of policy in place so that we don't end up spending another half a million dollars. Thank you.
Rachel Horowitz, and followed by Stanley Hertel.
I think you meant to say Rachel Horowitz. President Harris, Dr. Lally, members of the board. I'm a teacher at Thurgood Marshall. I've been teaching there for five years. As, I know you're all aware, that we have had a school shooting every week this year. That includes incidents of domestic violence, gang violence, what have you. Those are shootings that involve more than one person, as in more than the shooter. Those are shootings that occur in schools K through college. This also includes an accidental discharge of a firearm. There was one this morning in Maryland. At my school, there are 600 children. There are also staff. There is one SRO officer for all of those people. Most school districts have multiple SROs at their school. We have one. There's, so you're telling me that there is one man to protect all of these children plus staff? Other schools in the district are in the same situation. What about times of crisis? Other schools and other districts, I have friends in other districts, they are practicing active shooter drills. We have not had an active shooter drill this year, even since what happened in Florida and the other school shootings. We need a district-wide crisis plan that everyone is involved in. I am talking about teachers, I am talking about students, I am talking about parents, I am talking about local police. Everybody needs to be on the same, like, on board with it, or it's not going to work. If children look at me and are upset and say, "I don't know what to do in an emergency", I have nothing to tell them because we do not have a plan. Thank you.
President Harris, Superintendent and Board. My name is Stanley Hertel. I am Social Justice Chair of College Hill Community Church at Philadelphia Drive and Cornell Avenue in Dayton. And as a result of continued disinvestments and closings of various institutions, including proposals for schools in West Dayton, a group of our social justice people, including people who either are or have been teachers in the Dayton schools, got together and made the recommendation, which you may have seen. The church is one that values all people. We call ourselves the racial rainbow. And we believe there is no alternative to high-quality education for all children, including children and particularly children in poverty, which is what Dayton's biggest problem is, the amount of poverty that there is, the long-term injustices that have led to this poverty, and the disinvestment that continues. Essentially, for children in poverty, more resources are needed, and we keep seeing less resources. Not all of this is on this board, or this city, or its parents. The whole community of greater Dayton must take on the education of all children, including the children of poverty, because all will thrive and sync together. We also call for the legislatures to have a constitutional funding stream, and one that doesn't rely on the property taxes, which can be unaffordable to people on fixed incomes. As to school closings, we look beyond that. What matters is that more resources are spent on educating children, particularly providing the instruction and support to those instructors, teachers, aides, counselors, library media specialists, health professionals, the people doing this work. There need to be enough of them. The size of the classes should be such that the children can thrive. Children also need teachers, at least some teachers of similar ethnic and economic backgrounds to themselves, as well as a broad group of other teachers to bring out the best in them. We call on the board to make schools part of the community. Basically, the teachers, the parents, and the students should all be working together for the education of the children, using the buildings for that purpose, having programs for parents, making them maybe better parents, more educated themselves, enhancing their parenting skills. They need to be made welcome in the schools, which isn't always the case. And you can work on building relationships between parents and teachers, overcoming perhaps past bad experience parentses may have had with... overcoming perhaps past bad experience parentses may have had with schools. To make everyone a team for this purpose. The schools should be made a good place to teach, of fewer bureaucratic requirements that burden teachers. And the compensation really needs to be equivalent to the suburbs so that people will stay in Dayton. We ask for improved discipline, particularly minimizing suspensions, which are counterproductive. They essentially create the school-to-prison pipeline, of which we see too much. Conflict resolution, restorative justice, there are programs like this that should be expanded. We ask the board to encourage communities to adopt schools and work with them, something like Omega Church is doing. Reverend Karen Lewis Young from our church, I think, is working on such a proposal to expand that kind of program to other schools, particularly in West Dayton. We ask the board to provide materials that are equal to those in the suburbs and to encourage critical thinking, arts, language, as is expected in the suburbs, so that we're not just educating the menial labels of the future, which there may not be as many of, but that the children from Dayton can become the equivalent of the children of the suburbs. So, the details of the proposed changes, the so-called rightsizing, I don't know that we've all seen those, or really seen other than what the press coverage was, or the underlying factual data. I know trying to get factual data was not as auspicious as it maybe could have been. It seems like the data should be out there and the whole community, not just the board, should be able to evaluate the wisdom. And we ask for consistency.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Next is Lawrence Lindsay.
My name is Thashi O'Kor, I think you called me earlier. Good evening. I'm here to address the issue of school safety and bullying, which I think a couple people have talked about. So, as we know, school shootings are a national issue and recently we had a scare at Belmont High School, which is where I coordinate an after-school program. From what I understand, and I could be wrong, but from what I understand, there's no coordinated plan to address the Belmont School community after the incident as no gun was actually found and no one was hurt. It's also my understanding, just from the news, which I may be incorrect on this, that DPD is aiming to charge the student with making terroristic threats. Last year, I completed my master's in conflict transformation focusing on restorative justice and psychosocial trauma. From this lens, I think we need to make some intentional moves right now. Although no gun was found, our entire school community was impacted by the incident. It's common knowledge among the student body that the boy who made the threat had been being bullied for months. While I understand the need to take threats seriously, sending him to jail for a long time sends a dangerous message, that you're no longer part of our community if you reach your boiling point and make a bold cry for help, that there's no room for nuance in the conversation around bullying. Students generally don't want to see their peers locked up. So if that's the consequence, students are less likely to tell an adult if something's going on. Which brings me to my next point. The police have addressed the students at Belmont twice to tell them that, to tell them to tell an adult if they see or hear any threats or bullying. For one day, there was at least six extra SROs in this school. We need to engage the entire school community about how hurt people hurt people. Bringing groups like the street soldiers or the peace ambassadors to address de-escalation and bystander intervention. This can even be done district-wide. This acknowledges the impact that was felt by the entire community. A core principle of restorative justice is when a harm occurs, the community is a key stakeholder and must ask itself, what did we do or not do that contributed to this incident? What is our responsibility to address this? Part of our responsibility is to equip students with the tools to engage these daily conflicts. When telling an adult isn't working, or it isn't an option, watching untrained teachers and adults daily standing by as fights happen contributes to a culture where incidents occur like what happened a few weeks ago. Please don't let this come and go, sending the message that students should be afraid of themselves, one another, and that they don't belong in our schools with their full and complex selves. Thanks.
Good evening, school board members. My name is Larry Lindsay. And I spoke to the board about two months ago about my after-school program. It's a Back to Basics Youth Education Center. We have opened, we are located around the corner, 120 West Second Street, Suite 611 in the Liberty Tower. We provide tutoring, mentoring and computer training. We have ten computer stations and we need students to sign up, even though all the students are gone. Our program is free. We ask parents to provide transportation. We're open Monday through Friday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We want elementary, middle and high school students interested in computer coding and computer programming. We have students from the Miami Valley Career Technology Center volunteering. And we also have a company, the name of the company is Cargill, and it's right there on Needmore Road. We have people from the IT department working with us also. I would like to introduce my program manager, Horace Bowen. He graduated from Roosevelt High School, we won't hold that against him. I want to thank the school board for supporting us, especially Dr. Lolly for signing our letter of endorsement for our grant. Thank you very kindly. I love my city, it's all about the kids and I'm here to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Kimaru Watenza.
Good evening, everybody. I am Kimaru Watenza. And a while ago, I was at another board meeting, similar to this one, when you were honoring students who won the speech contest. And one of the, I think the student who won it overall was, he did a poem about an athlete who was, he couldn't read. So, since then, I've been wanting to relate this to you. My last year teaching, I was teaching fourth grade and there were a number of students who could not read. And I'll just tell you about one in particular. This was a little girl who was sweet, she was very well behaved. And she tried in school, she couldn't read and respond to what she had written, but she passed the test. She passed that third-grade reading test and she got good grades. I looked at her report card from the previous year and there was nothing to indicate her skills were as deficient as they were. So I called her mother. And I did that within two weeks of the school starting. And her mother came up, we developed a plan to have her actually learn to read rather than pass the test, because she had learned to pass the test, but she had not learned to read. The mother was kind of upset because I was the teacher telling her that and the child was now in fourth grade. She hadn't developed these skills. So she made an appointment to see the principal and was very dissatisfied with that outcome. She also made an appointment to see her child's, her other child's, third-grade teacher, to see what was really going on in that classroom, because now she was worried. And she was very impressed with that third-grade teacher and we proceeded right through the school year, but she took both of her children out of Dayton Public Schools. And she told me she was going to do it, and I checked with her afterwards, and she did do that. And she did it because the school was not teaching her children what we were doing, was teaching these children to pass the test rather than teach them to acquire academic skills. And for someone who has done it, you can do both. So, what I am saying to you is, when I read the paper, that you've got to put the emphasis on Westwood and I think another school to attract students. We need to attract students by making our schools an environment that's conducive to teaching and learning and have these students achieve, and you will attract students. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Javier Khalil. Next, Cindy Parks.
Hello Board, I'm a parent. One child attends Horace Mann, another child attends Belmont. I don't know if you know from a parent's perspective, but the day of the shooting incident, I received a text message from my son saying that the teachers told him that he felt uncomfortable to call or text a parent to come pick them up because they didn't know what was going on. I got no call from the school, I got no notification what was going on. And that's scary. My daughter, there was an incident at her school three weeks ago. They're letting the child back into school this week that was accused of attacking another student. I just heard about it over the weekend when I got a robo-call. I got no letters sent home that there had been an incident, but I'll get a letter as soon as somebody gets head lice. I don't care about the head lice, I want to make sure my kids are safe. Instead of having to wake up every morning, take them to school and wonder if I'm going to see them at the end of the day. No calls, no notice, you call the school and ask what's going on and you get the typical standard runaround. Nobody came forward about anything and they wanted to hide it and cover it up and change it to, a kid got in trouble for text messaging instead of, who made the initial threat and why? They didn't want to address the parents' issues, we all get pushed aside and told not to worry about it. So what do I do if I send my kids to school and they don't come home? Who's going to take care of me then? That's all I got.
That's it.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have the superintendent's recommendations.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second the motion.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you, motion carries.
May I have a recommendation, excuse me, may I have a motion to approve the following human resources after July 10th?
So moved.
Second the motion.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
No.
Would you like to have a motion to reconsider, Mr. President?
Yes, I will, I apologize, we have that notice, no.
I move that we reconsider the vote, let's vote on the reconsider first, Mr. President.
Yes, thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
President Harris?
No.
This is a motion to reconsider, Mr. President. It's been a long day, I know.
Yes, it has, I went on a flight, sorry. Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Now we can reconsider.
Is there a motion to second?
I'll second.
I'd like to make the motion if Board Member Wick Gany, if she sustains her second.
Yes. President Harris?
No.
Mr. Alhamdani?
No.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
No.
Dr. Walker?
No.
Ms. Wick Gany?
No.
Seven noes.
May I have a motion to approve the three-year district-wide school year calendars?
So moved.
Second the motion.
President Harris?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
May I have a motion to approve the college credit plus MOU with Central State University?
So moved.
Second the motion.
Mr. Doctor, President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
May I have a motion to rescind the December 19th, 2017 resolution not to renew sponsorship of Dayton Business Technology High School?
So moved.
Second.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
No.
Ms. Reiner?
No.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Five yeses.
May I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation for rightsizing the district with one change? The current seventh graders currently housed at Meadowdale High School, Belmont High School, Dayton Boys and Charity Adams Early will remain there for the 2018-19 school year and then transition into high school. No seventh graders will be added to the schools listed above.
So moved.
Second.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Alhamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Mr. President, that ends my recommendations and resolutions, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have new business items. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Dr. Lolly as she takes this new step in her journey, and we wish her well and will be supporting her. I want to say that I had the opportunity to be in Washington DC this past weekend at the Council of Great City Schools. And a great deal of that conference dealt with school violence. And we have heard a lot about that this evening from parents alike. And I just want to let, let this body know that several school districts across our nation have accepted the resolution that was presented by the Great Council of Great City Schools along with Dayton, Ohio. And during our time this weekend, we did have one item that was added to the resolution, and it is on page three of the resolution. In the third paragraph, we added the term restorative justice. That was a critical piece to the resolution across the country, and it was added. There were senators present along with members of the House of Congress, House of Representatives present. And that resolution was received wholeheartedly by the Great City Council. And so I want you to know that we're very much concerned about school violence across the nation. And many of our districts are doing a work to make sure that our young people are safe. And so I thank you for the privilege of going to the conference, to be a part of that great conference. And you'll be hearing more information thereof. At this time, we will hear from our Vice President, John McManus.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And while I have no new business, I would like to congratulate very much our new Superintendent, Elizabeth Lali. And I would also like to thank the members of the public and the families who came to speak to us tonight. And congratulations to all of our winners as well. So, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Board Member Mohamed Al Hamdani, do you have anything to share this evening?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no new business. I also would like to congratulate our new Superintendent, Dr. Lali. We look forward to working with you. We appreciate all the work that you've done so far, and we look forward to the next three years with you. And thank you to all the parents and groups and teachers and students that came to celebrate with us today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Board Member Jocelyn Ryan, do you have anything to share this evening?
I do. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to first thank all of the parents and community members and teachers and everybody else who has come out today and last week. Your input is valued, and we hear you. I vividly remember, because it was not that long ago, of sitting in the audience and just hoping that people heard me. And I want you to know that we hear you. I had the great privilege of accompanying the group of people from the downtown building and Dr. Lali as we met with all 10 of the schools over the last six weeks. It was a really intense time. We visited all 10 of the schools. I wrote them down, because I can't remember off the top of my head. We went to Westwood, Valerie, EJ Brown, Wagaman, Edison, WOW, Dayton Boys Prep, Meadowdale Elementary and Meadowdale High School, and Louise Troy. And we went because we wanted to talk to the parents there. We wanted to listen to their concerns, and we wanted to answer any of the questions that they had. And I went to all 10 of them, and I was deeply touched by the sense of community that each of the schools has. I was really impressed with the desire that they have to, to meet the needs of their kids and the students in the schools. I was impressed with the willingness to share their concerns with the district. And I saw the, the things that Dr. Lali heard. And not a lot of people know about those, those, those visits because they were not made public. But we really wanted to give each building a chance to have the, the parents gathered together. In fact, I went to Meadowdale, and I got, they have lab coats, and I have a little medal here that I'm, I wear on my badge with pride. But I have seen the process of meeting with parents and listening to their concerns. And I am grateful for a district that does that. I would also like to acknowledge the activism that kids took part in all across the country last week, but especially in this district. I'm proud of kids who are willing to stand up and say that they care about something. And I'm proud of the, the adults who will listen to them and will do their best to, to address those desires. And lastly, I would also like to extend my welcome to Dr. Lali. I'm very much looking forward to working with her for the next three, three years. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. At this time, Board Member Sheila Taylor, do you have anything to share this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much. First of all, I would like to say that I really appreciate the mother who, who spoke with her daughter in the audience concerning how schools are handling emergency situations. And to be honest, I don't really know. I know that we have wonderful SROs. We have great leadership in that department. However, I would like to, at this time, to, we do have a board meeting this Saturday, and I know that it's probably already scheduled. But maybe the board could at least have a briefing so that we can start putting on our agenda to find out exactly what those plans are. Because I do think, I, I do think that the board, the parents, the staff, the children, everyone needs to be aware of what to do in a tragic, tragic situation. So I appreciate you speaking in front of the public. I also wanna say that one of the things that I really strongly believe that Dayton Public Schools is, it needs to start doing now, is getting out and doing some recruitment of students. We need to sell to this public what our staff does in the classrooms. Because it's fantastic. There's a lot of fantastic, great programs, a lot of good teaching and learning that happens, a lot of extracurricular activities that go on, very supportive and loving staff. So I've talked to Superintendent Lali. Now I can say Superintendent Lali, and I'm happy. So I spoke with her, and she has agreed to allow me to work with Ms. Von Hart, who is already in the process of doing some of this selling of the, of the district. So it's kind of a recruitment. And I'm looking forward to this. I'm looking forward to getting out, meeting the people and the public, and letting them know what we do in the classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Walker?
Thank you. President Harris, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, would like to share resolutions to adopt a board policies, board policy. And these are for the second reading. Says, "Inasmuch as the Board of Education is committed to the continual updating of its Policies, Rules, and Regulations Manual, and the committee which was appointed has been working toward that goal. The following brought at this time for second reading are in compliance with board files. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policy manual that has been codified for inclusion in the Handbook of Policies, Rules, and Regulation." We have file C, I mean ACA-R and ACA-A-A-R. And it's non-discrimination on the basis of sexual harassment, on the basis of sexual harassment and harassment grievance procedures. The second is file ACA dash slash ACA-A-A. And it's non-discrimination on the basis of sex slash sexual harassment. File ACA dash E slash ACA-A-E is Sexual Harassment Complaint Form. File BDDJ and also KBCD is Broadcasting and Taping of Board Meetings. We have file BCFA, the Business Advisory Council to the Board. We have file IGBI, Limited English Proficiency. We have file EBC, Emergency Management and Safety Plans. File EBC dash R is Emergency Management and Safety Plans Regulation. There's file EEACD is Drug Testing for District Personnel Required to Hold a Commercial Driver, Commercial Driver's License. Policy file EEACD dash R is Drug Testing for District Personnel Required to Hold a Commercial Driver's License. It's a regulation. File JECCA is the Admission of Homeless Students. We have JECCA dash R is Admission to Homeless Students, and it's a regulation. We have JED, Students, Student Absence and Excuses. We have file GBK, No Tobacco Use on District Policy by Staff Members. There's file JFCG is Tobacco Use by Students. And the last file for the second reading is KGC, No Tobacco Use on District Property. Of these policies and files are being brought to you for a second reading and with, well, for your approval. And with that, I would move the approval of the policies I've shared.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Al Hamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Okay. Thank you. We have policies for first reading. Says, "Inasmuch as the Board of Education is committed to the continued updating of its Policies, Rules, and Regulations Manual, and the committee which was appointed has been working toward that goal. The following abroad at this time for first reading in compliance with board file BFC, Policy Adoption. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Dayton City School District, Montgomery County, Ohio, hereby accepts and adopts the following policies that have been codified for inclusion in the Handbook of Policies, Rules, and Regulations." We have file CK, Program Consultants. It's being changed to revive, it's being, the changes is being revised to better define, better refine district policies. File KD, also BDDH, Board Meetings. We have file KDR is Public Participation at Board Meeting. And it's being revised to better refine district practice. We have file KD dash E is Procedures for Individuals Addressing the Board Exhibit. And it's being revised to better refine district practice. These policies are being read for the first time. As such, a motion or second is not required. These, the policy will be available in the Superintendent's Office to review and comment prior to their second reading and adoption by the Board of Education. Furthermore, the policies will be reviewed by the, by the Superintendent's Office, the Board Office, and Legal Department of the Dayton Public Schools prior to second reading.
Thank you very much, Dr. Walker, for your hard work on the Policy Committee. At this time, do you have any personal remarks that you'd like to make this evening?
I do. On yesterday evening, several board members and along with Superintendent Lali attended the board, I mean, the board, attended the Employee Recognition, Re, Reception. And what a fine event. And Mr. Rumick has already reported on it. And I just want to underscore what he's shared about it because I, from a board perspective, from a board member's perspective, I thought that it's, what we've began there is well overdue. And I think that it does the district well. And I also wanna commend Mrs. Spurlock, Mrs. Spurlock and the Human Resources Department for organizing that and putting that together. Thank you for that. When we talk about morale in the district, I think that we are moving in the right direction. So thank you much. And lastly, I wanna join my colleagues by congratulating and welcoming Superintendent Lali. And thank you, uh, uh, Board Member Taylor. It sounds good to say Superintendent Lali. We don't have to worry about anything else. So Superintendent Lali, thank you, and we are glad that you are on board.
Thank you, Dr. Walker. Board Member Karen Wick Gany, would you like to share this evening?
Thank you, President Harris. Thank you to our bargaining units. Thank you to the parents and the teachers and the community that came out this evening to speak. I would like to assure you that we hear you. I hear you. I have my book of notes here. And I know you're here because you care and because you have passion for our schools and for our kids and our community. So thank you for your time and your passion. And you have our, our, our assurance that we are working hard up here to, to do right by you, to do right by our kids, and we'll continue to work hard. This is a big job, lots of layers, lots of things to learn. And we're working hard every day to stay on top of all of this stuff in this ever-changing, scary world that we, we live in. But I know it takes our teachers and our community to continue to take care of our children, our leaders of tomorrow. So I appreciate your time and consideration. I'd also like to piggyback and welcome and congratulate Dr. Lali. She is going to be a fine leader for our community. I'm so sure of that. And a lot of these issues that you bring to light, I'm sure that we're all gonna work to, work collaboratively and work together towards finding and creating solutions all the time for the, the opportunities that are always presented. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your consideration of the board. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you very much to board members for your sharing this evening. At this time, we would ask that that we will move into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22-G, two of the Ohio Revised Code. I move that this board go into executive session in the conference room. This meeting is being held to consider the employment of public employee or employees. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second. I'm ready to vote.
President Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Al Ham, Al Hamdani?
Yes.
Mr. McManus?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Dr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Wick Gany?
Yes.
Seven yeses.
Thank you. So moved.